Welcome to tonight's action meeting. First, we're going to have a video.
Hello and welcome to this North Penn news update. I'm Eric Jesperger. The students of North Penn High School's newspaper, The Night Crier, hosted a school board candidates town hall forum. Completely organized and hosted by the students, the event gave candidates the opportunity to address topics important to the students and offered The Night Crier students a firsthand experience of the political process. North Penn High School celebrated the 42 recognized students in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Twelve semifinalists and 29 commended scholars attended a breakfast in their honor with their families and the high school administrative team. In addition, senior Pollock Garcia was recognized as part of the National Hispanic Recognition Program for scoring in the top 2.5 percent of Hispanic and Latino PSAT test takers. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Todd Bauer had the opportunity to walk in the shoes of Transportation Secretary Kim Wort.
Yes, AD, we just got in touch with the parent and they are going to call us back momentarily with an ETA.
Dr. Bauer manned the phones yesterday during the early dismissal and Kim Wort won this opportunity through the North Penn Educational Foundation's auction last May. And the North Penn High School class of 2020 elected their homecoming king and queen. Senior Jamin Crosby and Aaron Chi were voted by their peers to wear the crowns at this year's homecoming festivities. Congratulations to these two deserving students. There was a homecoming of another sort at Oak Park Elementary and Pendale Middle School. Current Navy shipman and North Penn alum Matt Schultz surprised his brothers Adam and Ben when he returned to the States after deployment overseas. Congratulations to Matt and his family and thank you for your service. Several North Penn schools participated in the annual Walk to School Day. This event encourages students to practice healthy lifestyles through walking or even biking to school. The weather was perfect and participants had a great time. And next week begins Operation Safe Stop as part of the National School Bus Safety Week. Operation Safe Stop aims to remind motorists that passing a stop school bus when children are loading or unloading is both dangerous and illegal. The district and local law enforcement agencies are partnering together to ensure the safety of all of our students. For more from North Penn Television, be sure to check out our YouTube channel at youtube backslash NPTV. For North Penn News, I'm Eric Jesperger. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the Board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the Board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the Board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the Board, the Board President may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So I'd like to announce that the Board met an executive session this evening from 6:30 to 7:30 to discuss matters of personnel. Next up, we're going to have our recognitions and proclamations. Tonight, we have exchange students with Mr. Ted Knals as their advisor. Good evening, Mr. Knals.
Okay. I never get tired of this. I might have done this time and time again, year after year, but it's one of my favorite things because of these wonderful young people that represent us, North Penn, to go abroad. The North Penn International Friendship Committee administers the international program for the North Penn School District. Our program is centered around sending and receiving young people from our partner schools in Germany, France, and Spain. We have been sending and receiving students since 1962. I haven't, but pretty close. And have succeeded in sending and receiving over 600 young people from North Penn and to North Penn for study abroad and for also students to study at North Penn High School. The basis of our program is to select deserving and appropriate high school students and not only gain from this rewarding experience, but will serve as excellent ambassadors to promote peace and understanding throughout the world. And that is our purpose, to promote peace and understanding. I think we do it one person at a time. This past year, we sent five young people abroad through a full scholarship from our committee. And each has not only experienced a life-changing year, but has been an excellent ambassador for our school, their families, their communities, and our country. Each of their experiences is unique. However, each one will tell you that they would do it again without reservation. The IFC, which we are intimately called the International Friendship Committee, is proud of this rich program and proud of the students that have returned this year. I would like to introduce them to you. First is Ethan Baker, who went to Alen, Germany. And next is Alexa Brown, who went to Bordeaux, France. And next is Haley Bussey, who went to Madrid, Spain. And next is Chloe Seitz, who went to Salzgitter, Germany. And finally, Sarah Weaver, who went to Toulouse, France.
Ted, if you wouldn't mind coming through too, so we can shake your hand. Thank you and Bonnie for all the work that you do with this wonderful program.
That's always fun. So moving on then, the next item up would be the Audience of Citizens. Is there anyone that would like to make public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, then we will move on to the minutes. Can I have a motion, please, for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I wasn't even finished yet.[592.16][592.16](laughing). We're making this go quickly tonight. Okay, all right. Motion by Mrs. Ramich and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? Seeing none?
And just to be clear, that's for approval of the minutes for both the September 19th and October 1st meetings?
Yes, please.[612.12][612.12](laughing). All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on then to committee reports. Personnel. The Personnel Committee of the Board met an executive session on October 1st, 2019 for the purpose of discussing matters of personnel, including the appointment of staff, collective bargaining, and compensation. Next up is the Finance Committee. Mr. D'Azio?
Thank you. This is an update from the meeting that was held on October 7th. The monthly financial reports were reviewed and additional discussion was held on the following items. There was a LERTA request. A presentation was made by Globus Medical regarding their LERTA request for three parcels located in Montgomery Township. The committee suggested Globus develop an alternate proposal that phases in the tax increase over a period of fewer than 10 years. Further discussion will be held at the November Finance Committee meeting and the work session. There was also discussion regarding a bond refunding opportunity. Mr. Skraki provided an update on the projected savings and timeline for refunding three outstanding bond issues. At the time of the meeting, the projected net savings were $544,000. Tax collector audits. Mr. Skraki reported that the tax collector audits for Line Lexington and Montgomery Township were completed and there were no issues or concerns. Items recommended for the work session. The November work session would be the LERTA discussion and the next Finance Committee meeting will be Tuesday, November 12th at 6:00 PM in the ESC. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. Does anyone have any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Safe Schools. Mr. Caso?
Thank you. The Safe Schools Committee met on September 23rd, 2019. Mr. Dur reviewed the school police and communications recommendation that had been previously discussed by the committee. The committee moved this item forward to the October 1st work session for full board discussion. Mr. Dur then briefed the committee on several informational items, including security department activities through the start of the school year and Safe Schools data to be shared with the committee moving forward. Finally, Mr. Dur provided the committee with an update on the mandated training all security officers must complete prior to February this year. Currently, all of North Penn's security officers are scheduled to complete the required courses on time. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee will take place on Monday, October 28th, 2019 at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Caso. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Question. Didn't we assign the police at the last meeting?
That was at work session.
Yeah. What was that?
That was at work session.
Oh, at work session. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on then to ECP. Mr. Fusco?
Thank you. This update is from the regular ECP meeting of October 1st, 2019. At the meeting, there was action items, the adoption of policies. Again, as a result of the ongoing policy review process with PSBA, Dr. Bauer presented several policies to the committee that had been reviewed by administration, the district solicitor, and Mr. Fusco. That's me. Those policies are on the agenda tonight for a first reading. Repeal of the policies was also on the agenda. As a result of the ongoing policy review process with PSBA, Dr. Bauer presented several policies to the committee. That will be repealed following the adoption of those policies. That will take their place. Notice of intent to repeal specific policies is on tonight's agenda. There was also student travel items. Student overnight travel requests were presented to and reviewed by the committee. Informational items were presented as well. We had a presentation from instructional coaches. Mrs. Jackie Jamarko, Mrs. Rachel Berg, and Ms. Meg Burke, and Mr. Ron Martello discussed the roles of instructional coaches in the district. The next ECP meeting is scheduled for November 4th, 2019 at 6 o'clock at the ESC. Any questions? End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Facilities Operations, Mr. Caso?
The Facilities and Operations Committee met on September 23rd, 2019. Mr. Kennedy presented a design services proposal from Snyder Hoffman Associates for a new chiller at Gwinnett Square Elementary School due to ongoing issues with keeping the existing chiller operational. This project has been identified in our long-range capital improvement plan. The item is on tonight's agenda. The committee then reviewed the closeout documents for the Upper Gwinnett Township Stormwater Basin located at Pembroke Middle School. The township has been responsible for the maintenance of the basin and these documents must be approved by the Board in order to officially assist Upper Gwinnett with closing out the project. This item is also on tonight's agenda. The committee reviewed and discussed the bid results of the Crawford Stadium renovation project. Bids received were higher than estimated. The base bid was $8,391,000. With all the alternates, it would be slightly over $9 million. There was discussion as to why the bids were higher than estimated, including timeline demands, unemployment being low, and the economy being good. This was moved to the October 1st, 2019 work session meeting for further discussion. Board members asked to see a rendering of the stadium project. This will be added to the October 28th Facilities and Operations Committee meeting under informational items. Then, Mr. Kennedy gave an update on the Nap Elementary School renovation project. Design development continues and is ahead of schedule. On September 16th, the project was presented to the Lansdale Planning Commission, where the Planning Commission granted preliminary final approval for the project. On October 2nd, the project was presented to the Lansdale Code Review Committee. With their approval, the expectation is to be in front of the Lansdale Borough Supervisors on October 16th for the final land development approval. The committee then reviewed the long-range capital improvement plan, which now includes a multi-dimensional scoring matrix to prioritize the various projects across all building, all facilities in the district. The link is currently active online for the public to view. The next Facilities and Operations Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 28th, 2019 at 6:30 PM here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Caso. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Okay, moving on then to the North Monco Technical Career Center. Ms. Ott?
The North Monco Joint Operating Committee has not met since the last Board action meeting. The next meeting of the JOC will be on October 21st.
Thank you, Ms. Ott. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit?
I have nothing to report on the MCIU meeting. The next meeting is November 20th.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. North Penn Educational Foundation, back to Ms. Ott.
The foundation last met on October 6th. Executive Director Christine Liberaski and President Dave Kratz updated the trustees on the work being done with Match Nonprofit to revise the foundation's vision and mission statements. The Board of Trustees will hold a retreat in November to finalize these statements and begin drafting a new strategic plan that aligns with our goal of expanding the scope and impact of the organization. The success of the foundation's night at the Phillies was also discussed. More than 300 North Penn staff and family members attended the event, which will bring in more than $1,500 to the foundation, plus another $2,200 raised at an earlier game through a raffle. Thank you to all who attended and we had a really fun night. The Unite to Inspire Staff Giving Campaign kicked off on October 1st. More than $25,000 was raised last year and we're hoping for an even better year this year. Employees who donate may be eligible for awesome prizes like tickets to an Eagles game or Hamilton in Philadelphia. And on Monday, October 9th, we held the 17th Annual Golf Outing. 100 golfers enjoyed an Oktoberfest-themed day at Pinecrest. Thank you to everyone, sponsors and volunteers alike for that day. Educational Improvement Tax Credit dollars keep rolling in as well, including $20,000 from Univest. Thank you to all of our generous EITC partners. And finally, we're currently accepting mid-year grants. North Penn staff are encouraged to apply for funding available in January for innovative projects implemented by the end of the school year. All of these projects are made possible by generous donations and the events that are reported on tonight. For information on the foundation and the events mentioned, please contact Christine Liberaski at the ESC.
Thank you, Ms. Ott. Does anyone have any comments or questions? All right, moving on then to the Solicitors Report. Mr. Summers?
Thank you. And for the report tonight, I just want to announce that the Board did meet an executive session immediately prior to tonight's meeting for the purpose of discussing matters involving the evaluation of performance of administrative employees and receiving information on but not deliberating three additional items. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Next up then would be the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dietrich?
Thank you. I recommend award of the musical instruments bid as per the attached bids stipulations.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend that the Board of School Directors of the North Penn School District does hereby authorize the administration to work with PFM Financial Advisors LLC as independent financial advisor, Kegel, Kellon, O'Malley, and Lord LLP as bond counsel, and Sweet Stevens, Katz &amp; Williams LLP as the district solicitor to proceed with the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series A of 2019, pending acceptable market conditions and the maximum amount, approximate amount of $31 million via competitive internet auctions, proceeds of which will be used toward the refunding of the school district's general obligation bond, Series of 2013, Series of 2014, and Series of 2015.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. D'Azio and seconded by Mr. Caso. Mr. Summers, is this where you wanted the roll call? Mr. Skraki, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Absolutely. Mr. McBain?
Aye.
Mrs. Ramich?
Aye.
Mrs. Prokowsky?
Aye.
Ms. Ott?
Aye.
Mr. Caso?
Aye.
Mrs. Gee?
Aye.
Mr. Fusco?
Aye.
Mr. D'Azio?
Aye.
And Mrs. Stoll?
Aye.
Motion carries 9-0.
Thank you.
I recommend the adoption of the attached resolution regarding a capital reserve fund transfer for the 2018-19 fiscal year, thereby transferring $3,309,196 in general funds to the capital reserve fund.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Caso. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend that the attached stipulations to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and Ajuul Enterprises LP concerning the properties located at 800 North Wales Road, a parcel number as listed, and North Wales Road parcel number as listed, be approved as presented and that the Board President be authorized to execute the stipulations.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. McBain. Any comments or questions?
I'm going to abstain from this vote because my law firm represented the property owner in this appeal.
Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. Any other further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the contracts for the district as listed for October 17th, 2019, copies of which are on file in the business office.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich, seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of student travel requests as listed.
Motion by Mrs. Ott, or Ms. Ott, and seconded by Mrs. Gee. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of alternative placements. As per those listed, copies are on file in the Office of Special Education.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky and seconded by Mr. Caso. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend the approval of personnel items as per the attached.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So with that approval, we have Tom Schneider, who in the audience is the evening Director of Facilities and Operations.[1437.13][1437.13](applause).
Welcome back.
Welcome back, Tom.
All right, recommend the award of a contract to Snyder Hoffman Associates to design a new chiller for Gwinnett Square Elementary School, an amount of $11,100.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. D'Azio and seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend the approval of the Declaration of Restrictions and Covenants for the closeout of the Upper Gwinnett Township Stormwater Basin located at Pembroke Middle School.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, seconded by Mr. Caso. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend the adoption of the Board policies as listed.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Gee. Any comments or questions?
Can I just add a comment? I've shared this with Cheryl and the Personnel Committee, and I know that we are, one of these policies includes personal leave and family leave. And I just want to share that my daughter has been touched by teachers within the district who have gone out on maternity leave and are juggling returning to work and six children. And as a 14-year-old child, she has become very aware of the issue of family leave and is working to educate herself on what the district policy is and finding that it's quite standard, but is looking to see more. And through this process, she has shared with me how much she has valued those teachers and how much they have meant to her, and then seeing them with that return to work and struggling there. So I just want to advocate on her behalf that down the road, we begin to look at a more comprehensive family leave policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Are there any other comments or questions? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend the repeal of Board policies as listed.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Caso. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend the approval for first reading and then the eventual adoption by the school Board of the policies as listed.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McBain and seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend notice to, of the intent to repeal the Board policies that are listed.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. McBain. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Moving on then to the Finance Report. Mr. Skraki?
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of quick updates. First off, with the Board's approval of the parameters resolution tonight for the refunding, we'll move forward with the competitive bond auction. That'll be held next Tuesday at 11:00 AM here at the ESC. We'll have it on the screen. You're welcome to attend at 11:00 AM. And one hour prior to that, over at the bus garage next Tuesday, October 22nd, we do have our propane tank ribbon cutting ceremony. So Mr. Sokol was kind enough to put an article in the Reporter tonight about that, so I'm sure he'll be there at the ribbon cutting also, and everyone from the Board is welcome to attend that as well. I'd like to give you an update on the 2019-20 tax rebates. So far, we've had 311 applicants this year and $33,068 in rebates have been issued, a $107 average rebate. That's a 28% increase in the number of applicants this year and a 69% increase in the total amount of rebates that have been issued. So both numbers are up significantly, so the word must be getting out. Pleased to report that. Also regarding the bond refunding, tomorrow afternoon, we will receive our rating from Moody's. We had our ratings call last week and we've also had a couple of follow-up calls this week. It was pushed back pretty late in the process to Friday because I've been assured there's been, there's going to be a robust conversation, to use the analyst term, robust conversation about our rating. So it will be a big tug-of-war between a AAA rating and a AA1 rating. So we'll cross our fingers for good news. We'll know tomorrow afternoon. In terms of our local audit, our local audit is complete. There were no audit findings, no material weaknesses, and we do plan on having Mr. Furman from Malley LLP present at the November 12 Finance Committee meeting. So that's a must-see presentation, so make sure you're there for November 12. Very stimulating. It's a highlight of my year on the Finance Committee.
Wow, okay.[1755.11][1755.11](laughing).
Yes, yes. Now, project update, I want to let everyone know, Mr. Caso alluded to this in his Facilities and Operations Report, but last night, the Lansdale Borough Council met and we did receive final approval now from the Borough Council for our Nap Elementary School projects. We've cleared all planning hurdles at this point, full steam ahead with the project. We will have a presentation by Mr. Schrader from the Schrader Group on October 28th at the Facilities and Operations Committee meeting. We'll review the latest design and provide the latest cost estimates. Finally, a reminder for our property owners that the end of the base period is October 31st, coming up pretty quickly. That's next week. After this date, a 10% After this date, a 10% penalty will be levied for those property taxes that remain unpaid. In terms of the cash receipts for September, we had cash receipts totaling $31.8 million and disbursements totaling $30.5 million, which left us with a total cash balance at the end of September totaling $197.5 million. So we're near our peak for the year in terms of our cash flow. $197.5 million this year is about $5.4 million more than we had last year at that same period. I'd ask for approval of the Treasures Report.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio and seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Skraki? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. I recommend approval of, I'm sorry, I recommend ratification of disbursements for the month of September 2019 in the amount of $33,494,383.75.
So moved. Motion by Mrs. Ramich and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, for information, we do have the monthly financial reports listed in Board docs, and we do review those in more detail at the monthly Finance Committee meetings. I'll be happy to answer any questions on the reports.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Skraki. Does anyone have any other business?
I do. I'd like to read a statement.
I'm sorry?
I said, "I do."
Okay.
"I'd like to read a statement."
Okay.
"On and off over the past 28 or so years, I've sat at this table for probably at least 23 or 24 years, and for the most part, I have enjoyed my time and thoroughly enjoyed working with the administration. You have several top-notch professionals working for you here. Your administration has made things happen that would not have happened without their talent, dedication, and commitment. However, I would also like to point out the part that the previous Board played in this scene. Under the leadership of prior Boards, specifically between 1993 and 2016, we did not kick the can down the road, as some current Board members have so inaccurately alluded. As a matter of fact, the previous School Board in our district should be particularly recognized for the following contributions to the community over the past 20 years. The awards and accolades North Penn receives today were not earned overnight. We have a tradition of excellence, and the awards prove it as they go back several decades." Contrary to popular rhetoric, which has been spewed by some members of the current Board, the district has planned for the future. When I joined the Board in '91, we were just finishing up some major renovations to Pendale Middle School, and over the past 20 years plus since then, each of our buildings has benefited from structural renovations. Even though the high school is ripe for some major configuration augmentations, we have made significant improvements there as well. For instance, the building of Cape Heart Edition, the Audion, senior cafeteria, the auditorium, the wrestling gym, the auxiliary gym. We've also updated the auditorium, improved security, and added a tech suite. There were no student computers when I started. The reports provided by the business office were updated in a word processing program, not a spreadsheet program. The numbers are much more accurate nowadays." We developed master plans for construction. We've conducted enrollment studies, and we have redistricted when we needed to do so. We did not kick the can down the road. We have engaged the community with open communication, community outreach, transportation, and redistricting committees, strategic plan committees, textbook selection committees, employee selection committees, and more. We have awards in this area as well that show decades-long commitment to the transparency and the gathering of community input. Over the years, we have always maintained a high employee retention rate, and our graduation rate is over 96%. Of specific note is the fact that only two superintendents have served us since 1998. The mean tenure for a superintendent is usually only five or six years. North Penn School District has persevered through some difficult economic times nationally through careful budgeting, fair contract negotiating, cost-cutting measures, wise investing, and a favorable debt ratio. Our financial operations have been recognized for their excellence at the state level, and note that the district's bond rating rose to one of the best in the state. We did not kick the can down the road or avoid the tough decisions, but we were prudent with the spending of the funds entrusted to us for the benefit of the district. I find it personally very offensive that every time you get the chance to put the prior Board down, you take it by making inaccurate statements about the past advances of which you know nothing about. As my time on the Board comes to a close, I implore you to put an end to your fixation on the perceived failures of past Boards and focus on the responsibility you now have to represent our community. You will find yourselves having to make tough decisions. They may not always be popular with everyone, but please try to do so in the best interests of this great community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for the opportunity to serve my community over the last 28 years.
Thank you, Mrs. Prokowsky, and we appreciate your service over the last 28 years.
You do. Thank you.
I think no matter what side of the aisle you are on, we are all here for the benefit of the students of the North Penn School District. And we may have differing opinions on how we get to where we want to go, but we do respect your service, so thank you for that. And we'll miss you.
No, we really, we really will miss you, Tara. I think it has, you, you keep us on our toes, and you've, you've taught me a lot, and I think I can speak for all of us that you, you really have taught us a lot. And so, and like Tina said, I just, I want to thank you for your, your 20-plus years of service and for your service with us over the last year or so.
Yeah, I'd echo that sentiment. And I'd also say that having now been here for about two years, I do have a better appreciation for what it means to sit in this seat and for the fact that decisions that are made come with a constituency of people who are pleased and a constituency of people who are displeased, and this is, in a lot of ways, a thankless position. And yourself and the former Board gave an awful lot of their time, time away from their family, to commit, to volunteer to their community, and their commitment and their service is appreciated.
Yep. Mrs. Prokowsky, thank you for your service.